I call the order to order at the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council Work Session. I want to thank all the citizens and everyone for participating this afternoon. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Battle. Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Council members, we are in need of a closed session. I now ask for a motion and a second.
Motion approved.
Well, actually, we need to read the closed session.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a1 for the purpose of discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment specifically regarding the position of city assessor, and pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a8 for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel employed by the city regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of advice by such counsel specifically regarding the Virginia Opio Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, sir. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle is absent. Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We are in closed session. Mr. Vice Mayor, could you please provide the certification to come on a close?
I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Thank you, sir. We have, we're in need of a motion and a second?
There was the motion.
Yeah, right, that was the motion. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Ms. Jones, are you ready to proceed with your items, ma'am?
I am.
Please proceed.
As part of the city's initiative on crime reduction strategies, we're in the process of developing a comprehensive crime reduction plan. This plan will serve as a roadmap or blueprint for the city's efforts. We have three presentations scheduled for tonight. Crime prevention, this is the first, will highlight some key components of our overall crime reduction plan. The focus for tonight, however, will be to share some of the crime reduction initiatives underway. The second will address the sports field update. This presentation provides an update of the status of the sports facilities, an initial assessment of a major sports plex, and a condition report for the other recreational facilities. The third and final presentation provides a deeper review into the additional recreational programs and the community partners committed to serving our youth. Mimi Terry, our CFO, will lead the overall crime reduction presentation, and she will be followed by Mr. James Wright, the city engineer, and finally, Mark Palmitop, the Director of Parks Recreation and Tourism, will respond respectively. Mimi, you may begin.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Madam City Manager, Administration, and Citizens of Portsmouth, good evening. I am here to present the City Manager's Citywide Comprehensive Crime Strategy Goals Plan. So, the City Manager's Citywide Comprehensive Crime Strategy consists of goals: building strong community engagement and partnerships, prevention and intervention programs, focusing on data-driven enforcement, providing safer and healthier neighborhoods, partnering with grassroots organizations to identify solutions that address the city's crime objectives. What is the definition of crime? Crime is an action or an omission that constitutes an offense that may be prosecuted by the state and is punishable by law. It is illegal activities, any action or activity that although not illegal, evil, shameful, or wrong. What causes crime? Crime is complex, but it is connected to poverty, low self-esteem, unemployment, alcohol, and drug abuse. Poverty. Poverty is perhaps one of the most concrete reasons why people commit crimes. Economic deprivation is seen as a major instigator for crime. Although I won't read every single line, but I would like to hit on the highlights. So, when we look at crime and we look at poverty, more than 20,000 children die due to poverty every day. In a country where economic deprivation is rampant, it is common for people to engage in criminal acts. Hunger and poor economic conditions lead to many people to crime activity. Many young people engage in criminal activity because they believe it is their responsibility to take care of their impoverished households, even if it commit, even if it means to commit a felony. If you're not able to provide for your entire family as an impoverished individual, at some point, you may consider taking a negative, a negative path in order to take care of your family's needs. Low self-esteem. Low self-esteem is a form of concern in the modern world. Many young people commit crimes and use drugs because they see a lot of their peers engaging in acts. This also is due to a lack of strong will and peer pressure. Unemployment. Unemployment is a skyrocketing factor in many countries. It is often the main reason why so many people commit crimes. More than 30% of people in this world are unemployed. Many people destroy their careers when they engage in criminal activities at a young age, and once that is a blemish, that becomes a blemish on their record, so they have a hard time finding jobs. Alcohol and drugs. Drugs and alcohol addiction is another rampantly growing disease in our society today. You could say about, if you estimate or round up, you have about 1 million people who die every year from drug addiction and alcohol addiction. Most violent criminals, when asked about their crimes, often blame drugs as the main reason. A poor lifestyle compels a person to adopt habits in which they could normally distance themselves from. Crime profile. Portsmouth population and age distribution. This information came from the scouts, national scouts, neighborhood scouts. This information is from back to 2019. With Portsmouth's population being about 94,398, this is just giving you an idea of what age ranges make up our Portsmouth citizens. The number of crimes committed in Portsmouth on violent crimes and property from this study per 1,000 residents, 6,423 for the number of crimes, at the crime rate of 68.4. If you look at this for property, crimes on property, burglary, theft, and motor vehicle, you would see compared to the national average where Portsmouth is, it's about two times more than what the national average is if we look at it per 1,000 residents, per person. There are 88.3% of our people actually graduate from high school. What I really want you to take away from this is the individuals below poverty level is 16.8%. The three highest employment industries in Portsmouth are healthcare, retail, and manufacturing. Demographics, black or African-American make up 52.2% of the city of Portsmouth. Whites make up 37.7%. American Indian, .4%, so on and so forth. What is the city's crime plan? To address the root cause of crime by using a systemic and holistic approach and changing cultural norms and policies in a collaborative and comprehensive manner. What are we doing? We are developing city's crime profile, defining goals and objectives, identifying partnerships, implementing initiatives, getting results. In progress, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but I would like to hit on each one of these. We're extending youth programs through partnership agreements with Portsmouth Public Schools to ensure access to neighborhood school facilities and recreation and after-school programs. We're engaging in community participation. We're initiating requests to Dominion Power to enhance lighting within high-crime areas as defined on the crime data we have. We're partner with, partnering with grassroots organizations to break down the silos that often impede the progress of community engagement and inclusion. We're providing mental health training classes and initiatives from social services, behavioral health care, to public safety employees and others to address individual needs. We're redirecting patrolling in neighborhoods based on key factors. The sheriff deputies are more visible and assisting the police department. We're developing public-private partnership plans of action for violent crime reduction. We're developing additional outreach strategies for Portsmouth at Work and the Hampton Roads Workforce Development Program for Youth. We're responding to community concerns. We're enforcing blighted housing, buildings, and residential areas aggressively. We're increasing maintenance over, overgrown vegetation. We're hiring a new police chief. We're evaluating all positions that impact crime. We're increasing opportunities for minorities and women-owned businesses as a means to combat crime. Under development consideration. Homeless initiatives. The city has identified a facility and partnered with the local stakeholders to address homelessness. Enhancement of citywide membership or mentorship programs in peak crime areas. Development of internal and external operation procedures. We're educating and, and communication in our community. Technology integration, training, and accountability. Setting citywide curfews for kids. Identifying safe school zones. Increasing protection for residents. Partnering, partnering with community stakeholders to identify grant funding for vocational education programs for youth, adults, and families. What we're requiring research on is accountability for residents to have an excess, that have an excess of complaints for illegal activity within the community, criminal blight. We're housing initiatives and incentives for employees who live in Portsmouth with public safety. Leveraging city resources with grants, public safety division collaborations. We're reconsidering tech programs in schools for skilled trades. Approaches to engaging parents and addressing existing stigmas related to skilled trades. Next steps. Complete comprehensive crime strategy. Develop grassroots grants process, metrics, and measures. Continue discussions with Portsmouth Public Schools and develop action plans for the certified and technical education programs. We're developing a crime financial plan and budgeting. I heard someone asked today, what was the takeaway from this presentation? I would say it's a call to action. Crime is not only an issue in Portsmouth, but also an issue that is plaguing our nation. The city's call to action will require all Portsmouth in this fight. It is not a one-person show or an overnight fix. As we continue to knock down barriers, boundaries, and stigmas that surround this great city, we must lean on each other for help and support. This concludes this presentation. I am prepared to entertain questions.
Thank you, Ms. Terry, for that comprehensive presentation. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I think there's one question I didn't see and hear, but I think it's equally important, and that question needs to be asked. Why do people not commit crimes? Because therein, I think, lies the, the answer to some of the questions in your presentation. And, you know, there're probably two factors externally. I think people don't commit crimes because fear of getting caught, fear of getting penalized, as in arrested, or some other auction, action. And that's no different than asking a school kid, well, why, why don't you skip school? That, that answer would be, when I was in school, I would get my butt whipped by my parents if I got caught. So, that, that was based on fear. The other item would be externally, or internally, I'm sorry, that morally, you, you feel that it's wrong, that's why you don't commit a crime, and your conscience won't let you. But I think that's an important question. You know, you hear two arguments. From the liberal side, they blame it on poverty. You know, if that, if that was the case, probably the, the worst time in our history would have been during the Great Depression. The murder rates and crime rates would have been through the roof, but they weren't. And, you know, conservatives probably say, oh, it's welfare is the root cause, but that's not true either, because I think if you look at it, the crime in our country really started escalating in the early 60s, even before the, the Great Society programs came about. But my point is, I think there's, there's more to this that, that we, we need to put on the table for discussion. I am glad to see that hiring of a police chief's on the list, but I want to see more officers on the street. So, I, I think in this, these suggestions on how we're going to cope with it, part of that answer is that we, we need to hire more police officers, and we need to cut down on the turnover rate and keep the ones that we have in our city. We all know that Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and some others are offering bonuses. I don't know what impact that's going to have, certainly is not going to be a good one, and I know we are doing some things that the city manager has in the works, but depending on who you talk to, we're either down 70 or 80-some police officers. And that goes back to the external reason why people don't commit crimes. You know, the fear of getting arrested, if you may. The other part of that is judicial system. You know, nowadays, some, in some cases, people only serve in a third of their sentence, and some people get charged with a crime and they're bonded out even for first-degree murder nowadays, which is totally ridiculous. So, it, it's, it's going to take all elements to come together with the solution. I don't know that we've invited, have we invited any of our judicial folks to participate in putting this together? I think this is a good start, but I, I think there's a lot more that needs to be done to it. But I go back to my first statement. I think the solution lies in the other half of that equation, and why don't people commit crimes? The crime last night, for instance, at one of our restaurants that I won't name, happened to individuals, and I, I don't think their case would fall into any of this. You know, they had, they had an argument and decided to settle it, one of them at least with a gun, and somebody got killed. So, you know, the question there is, was a gun, was he carrying a gun legally? How did he procure the gun? But crimes of passion are going to continue to happen. So, there are a lot of pieces to this, but you covered a lot of it, and thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
I appreciate your opinion on things, Councilman Moody. I just wanted to give you my perspective, coming from where I come from and coming from the conditions that I come from. And growing up out of Dale Homes, it, it was certain things financially that my family didn't have, and I did some things that I'm not proud of to make money for my family and to make sure that we was taken care of, not because I really cared about the consequences, but because the, the things at home were more important than what the consequences are. So, you know, I think even if, with people knowing the consequences of, they can go to jail, they can get locked up, or whatever the case may be, that they, they still do it, and this, and all across the country, crime has always been a part of what we do, what, what goes on, because the underlying issue is the reason why people commit crimes, the reason why people go to the streets, the reason why somebody's getting shot, the reason why somebody's doing the shooting. They, they know that they can go to jail. There isn't, I don't think anybody in their right mind is literally going out and saying, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna sell drugs, I'm gonna do whatever the case may be, and I'm not going to go to jail, or some of the things I hear online, I'm a, I'm a sell drugs, or I'm gonna commit this crime because I know we don't have a police chief, or I'm gonna do this because the, the Commonwealth attorney is not going to do this or that. It's really the conditions that people grow, and some people feel like they don't have choice or different opportunities. And I think that's what council is here to do, is to provide those opportunities, even if we don't directly dibble into those things ourselves, is with the things that we can provide, the, the, the organizations around that deal with, with those issues. And as far as the police, I think I asked a question last week, but I just want to make sure, we are hiring police officers, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay, yeah, so, I think that we're, we're trying to, to get into that issue and trying to help with that issue as far as police officers. So, if anybody's interested that's watching this today, please apply. We need people in the community that, the community of Portsmouth to apply for these police officer opportunities, because it'll be good to see people like us, white or black, in our community that's from Portsmouth, Portsmouth people. That'll be a good way to help with some of the issues in the city, and community policing is, is really a good way to kind of stop some of these crimes. But also, I, as far as when it comes to our crime plan, I just want to make sure that we're not leaving the most important people out. And I, and I know we're talking to the police, we're talking to organizations, but some of the most important people that we're leaving out of the process, and I'm hoping that is a plan in place, or maybe it just wasn't mentioned, but the people who are being affected about those crimes. The people in the community, the young people that don't have a voice in this, in this, in this particular topic. The people who are scared in the communities of Dale's Home, London Oats, South Side, they're scared to come outside, the ones that reach out to so many of us on council. So, I want to make sure that we are actually touching those people and getting them involved in the room and listen to what their concerns are and learn how, what they feel that can fix these issues.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll, I'll let somebody else talk for a minute.
Thank you, sir.
Then I'll come back later.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir, Councilmember Battle, you have the floor.
I too lived in public housing, and when I lived in public housing, it was a community. We had all the services that we needed to develop and grow. We had youth sports, we had the center and tutorial programs, we had men and women. And so, even though I came up in public housing, it was a community, just as the community I live in today. But what we did over the last 50, 60 years, we stopped taking care of our youth. We began to say, everybody for yourself, don't put any money in somebody else's children. My children's fine, let me keep getting this money. Don't put it in the community. And consequently, this is what happened, and we've lost touch with our kids because we weren't there. We haven't been there. And finally, we are understanding that, and we're putting the communities and the collaborative efforts and the programs in place to change that. And things are going to change, and I, this is beautiful, because this is diversity, and each one of us has a perspective. And the only way this city's going to work is, we understand that we need policemen, and we have to also understand that we don't need any kind of policeman. When I was a child, I knew the white policeman. I knew the canine dogs. They treated us with the dignity and respect. But in this day and time, policemen run from the communities. They don't mesh with the communities. So, we can hire 5,000 extra policemen. If they don't have skin in the game, or put skin in the game, we're not going to get a outstanding performance and development from them. You have to walk these communities. You, whenever you have on that uniform, you have to say good morning or good evening to 1 million people. If they're, you're in this city and they are citizens, you have to speak. You don't walk past them like you're on an island somewhere. And this is what happens when you hire folk. You beg for folk, and you get folk from the military who are from Mississippi. What kind of skills do they have to deal with a diverse community? Not many of them do. I'm not saying all of them don't, but we have to have a police department who is just as effective as the sheriff's department in milling and getting the trust and then performing their duties.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Terry. Under the next steps tab that you have, going to complete a comprehensive crime strategy, so who will the players be? Is it going to be city, or we're going to roll it over into our citizens, our civic leagues, our churches? So...
I'll defer to the city manager on that.
Yes, those stakeholders will be all of the representation that we have in this community. This, keep in mind, was just in response to what we're doing right now. This is not the entire plan. Once we complete the entire plan, it will address every component of what we're doing as well as those stakeholders. Okay, got it. And then I guess, I guess we don't know how long that will take, or how, when we get the results, we'll go back to the comprehensive plan and, and apply them or implement them into the, the plan. Okay, then I guess under the... Okay, then I guess under the developing the financial plan and budgeting, so are we looking to include some ARPA funds for, as part of this budgeting? Once we get, start formulating the budget, then we will provide recommendations as to what we think would be the best source of funds to use for the programs we identify. Okay. And then the last question, I guess, I know we've had public speakers the last two meetings, but have we thought about a public hearing on, on the matter with, you know, some kind of format or strategy? And also, maybe like a survey to think, to take in mind what the greater community is thinking about, you know, their elements of crime, because people may be impacted, affected in, in different ways, just to see what our citizens are thinking about this, because, you know, I've been told, or I've heard, or I've even thought my own self, that we need to think outside of the box, you know, we can't keep doing things the same way and get, you know, a different result, so we need to try something different. And if we had a survey that included all of our citizens inside of Portsmouth, then maybe we may get a different perspective on, from what, you know, I don't know, I guess all of our city departments came, you know, helped the city manager come up with this, but this is our city departments. We still have communities and, you know, people that are impacted daily in, in different ways than our city employees are, are impacted, that may bring a different perspective to, you know, our comprehensive plan. And that's one of the things also that we'll be looking at. We're gonna use a variety of methodologies as we go forward in identifying how we engage with our broader community. One of the things that's been suggested in, in one of the meetings that we've had with stakeholders from the community, is that we need to rethink how we do and get information. The traditional surveys, we do not get the responses that we need to hear. So, they suggested grassroots initiatives, going door to door, getting information that we would then upload into a database and have that information to be able to capture it citywide. So, that's some of the things that we're considering. We have a presentation scheduled for the seventeenth to actually hear more detail about that, but we will be looking for every opportunity that we can to engage the broader community, as well as listening for, meeting with civic associations, list, individuals coming to schedule meetings to talk. We want to go to them. We don't want to just wait for them to come to us. We want to be able to meet them where they are. And we're trying to work with the schools to figure out how do we engage the parents. So, we have a number of strategies and methodologies that we will be using to ensure that we get a broad sense of the community and be able to capture those ideas. Great. I think it's a great start, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Terry and our city manager for the presentation. On page, on page sixteen of the presentation, I think the challenge to this council and the city manager is gonna be, how committed are we to addressing the root cause? Okay? The root cause on page thirteen, in Portsmouth, as well as what is being seen across the nation, is what is highlighted at the bottom of page thirteen. It's not this anecdotal stuff about whether people are afraid of being arrested, the morality, it's not that. It's, it's the issue of poverty. And if we are truly committed to it, then our city manager, as a council, we pass policies, ordinances, and our city manager should be focused on bringing back to us, addressing policies that will address this root cause in dealing with our poverty issue. If we can stay focused on that, then we'll make a dent. We're not gonna totally eradicate it, because this is America, and it's still capitalism. And poor folks gotta make rich folks rich. However, if we're gonna be sincere about this thing, it's, it's the root cause. I'm always reminded that Dr. King said, sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity are two of the most dangerous things in the world. If we don't address this with scientific approaches to the root cause, and, and with us being in a position to pass policy, then it's just a waste of time. And so, I hope that we will put in place short-term and long-term policies that will truly address the root cause. We don't need a whole lot of, we, we have data out here that already tells us what needs to be done. It's just a matter of us putting the money in the right places. And, and I didn't come up here to have all of these community meetings, to have all of this activity that does not address root causes. If we're not doing that, it's a waste of time. And so, how committed we are to this, and I'm challenging our city manager, that, that you need to bring us back what we need to do, what policies need to be passed. That's what we do as a council, that will address poverty. And we've seen some indications, some summaries, but, but we need to pass some policies. And so, that's, that's what I'm challenging our colleagues to say truth to.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. From my previous comments on July twenty-seventh, I did ask the city manager, could we request the sheriff for any help? I hear a lot of my colleagues talk about community policing, and if you are familiar with Portsmouth, if you grew up here, a lot of people, a lot of citizens have trusted sheriff department for many years, many years. I think right now, we know the issue with our police department is being strained, the numbers are down. I know we're still hiring people, but we really do need to think about, you know, having a conversation, really getting them to step in a little bit more, and doing what we can do to help secure our neighborhoods, secure our areas. Like I said before, I think that's the closest thing that we can do for community policing, also creating that presence in these neighborhoods. So, you know, that's something that I just really want to make sure that we can get a concrete plan on, getting more of those patrols in our neighborhoods. I mean, I'm in these neighborhoods, and I really don't see it, and I think our police department is exhausted. And before we look at, like you say, just throwing people in jail, let's, let's see can we take another approach and really get our sheriff department out here and being hands-on now. The thing is, they do a lot of community events, and like I say, they're always in the neighborhood, but it is more that I think that we can do to really let our citizens know that, you know, we, we care about their safety.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, I share in some of the comments that was said, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, when she said we need to do things different and not do the same thing. And also, that we need to take big steps into, to addressing the issue, because the truth is, is that right now, we are losing especially children, more children than we are putting up good businesses in the city of Portsmouth. So, with that being said, I think we need a bold new direction. And me personally, you know, I'm, I'm with timeframes. I don't think we just should put a generic date out or generic thing out and expect that something's gonna come back soon. So, with that being said, with this CARES Act money that we have, I'm recommending that we put three million dollars out in reference to dealing with, given to the nonprofit organizations that's Portsmouth-bound, that's from Portsmouth, to deal with these issues, because they're the ones with the boots on the ground, and they're the ones that's doing the things that need to be done. I know we say as a city that, you know, everybody has to play their part, and the city hasn't played their part for a very, 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 very long time. So, I think it's time that we actually go to our organizations with boots on the ground to deal with these issues and provide them the things that they need, the resources, the funding that they need to actually deal with the issues in the community. So, with that being said, I would like to see a plan, at, at least in our September meeting, that has something out there for the funding, the Portsmouth nonprofit organizations or corporations, or whatever it is that deal with the issues in our city, that deal directly with the children in our city. I would like to see a, a, a plan that includes jobs for our youth, sixteen, the ones that's getting in trouble between fifteen and eighteen, where we have stipulations on it, where they go to school, get their GED, finish school, so that they can, they can also get paid for doing some type of work, whether it be providing opportunities to people out here who own businesses, providing them the funding to give to these teens, because a lot of the issues, a lot of the things that cause people to do the things that they do is money, and they have to take care of their family. So, if we're providing that with a stipulation to, to make them go back to school to get their GED or get a diploma, I think that we can also deal with the other issues, which is them dropping out of school and the dropout rate. And that'll help put them on the right path. So, I think that's the type of investment that we need to, to see. And proper procedure, I guess we would need a consensus regarding that from the members of council.
Sir, that, that would be a procedure, but that, that's not what we're discussing right now. So, if you're finished with your comments, Mr. Battle has some comments.
What you mean, that we're not discussing?
We're not discussing that at this time. I mean, you've made your comments, and the other council member is, is waiting to make some comments. So, if you're finished with your comments, I'm gonna give him the floor.
So, so after the, the comments are made, then we'll go for the proper procedure and ask for consensus of council?
Sir, I just shared with you, you had the floor, you said what you needed to say. I'm moving on to the next speaker.
But I'm asking you a question right now.
And I'm sharing with you.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, just to assist Mr. Vice Mayor Barnes, during our regular meeting, then that would be a time where we could take a consensus.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that there are gonna be some citizens in our city that's gonna say, "The nerve of Paul Battle, he has nothing to do with this. We make decisions here, and the vanity is gonna pop up all over the place, the vainness, and they're gonna miss the point." Now, when I say this, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm just merely talking about a problem that we have to attack. When we talking about the root cause, we really need to get down to the root cause, which is fifteen percent of our students read on the level that they should. Eighty-five percent of them don't. Now, we can't continue to administer national and statewide curriculums because they don't possibly meet our needs. If we're having a problem with reading, in our preschools that we're planning to give funds to, we need for them to concentrate on reading, to buy sight words, to go over sight words, and to read constantly to the children. We know this is a problem. When they get to the sixth and the senior years in high school, sixth grade, so forth, they're not prepared. So, we have to meet these challenges in the beginning of education. Safe instance, in the first grade. If we know that a kid is behind, or we have a class of kids that's behind, we need to group them and spend more time on reading. We, we're not, we, as if we're, we don't hear it, or we don't see it. That's one of the root causes. Now, I am not saying that anybody, this group is wrong, or that group is wrong, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say what I'm saying, because this is a, an awful problem that we have, and we have to. No, we don't have to. But my suggestions have valor, and they very well may help along with getting other folk to think on the same lines. But we have to, we have to get those kids to be able to read, and there's no need in planning a curriculum of a trichology, if we know they're not reading. Even if we spend the first grade ensuring that they're gonna be at the second level before we go any further. These are just suggestions that I know some folk are gonna say, "Well, you're not on the school board, and that's, that's cool." But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. And we need to attack that problem, because that is a major root cause. If they can't read, they'll, they'll choose the alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, and what I want to add to the discussion, if I may, in reference to what was talked about in terms of opportunities, in terms of summer jobs programs, we have already partnered with the Hampton Roads Workforce Council with our Next Gen Summer Jobs Program, and we have provided, and we continue to provide summer jobs to the youth in the city of Portsmouth, and we provide training. In addition to that, we are working very collaboratively, and we will continue to open opportunities for our young people as it relates to job training and opportunities for them to upscale and be prepared to go into careers that will provide living wage jobs. In addition to that, I had the opportunity to attend a back-to-school event at IC Norcom for ninth and tenth graders from all of our high schools. And it was my privilege to sit in the audience with these young people who are fired up about learning and opportunities to learn and create a future for themselves. The keynote speaker was our Commonwealth's Attorney, Ms. Stephanie Morales. You all know that Ms. Morales grew up here in Portsmouth and, and worked very hard to achieve her goal of becoming an attorney and our Commonwealth's Attorney. One of the things that she said to the young people, that as you grow and as you build relationships with your friends and in your communities, you've gotta make good choices to ensure that you have a future. And that's irregardless, or regardless of where you come from, whatever your circumstances, you've gotta make good choices so that you can at least give yourself a chance at a brighter future. And the other thing that she said when talking to those young people, and they listened very intently, was the fact that you need to choose who you hang around with, because sometimes the people you hang around with don't have your best interest at heart. And so, my takeaway from that is, as we discuss these matters of grave importance to our community on violence and our young people, we've got to remember that this is a process that we all have to continue to participate in and work towards to provide a better future for all of our children. And I can honestly say, I believe that every person up here is committed to that. I've talked to them, and I'm encouraged by what you all have put together as a presentation, and I want to thank you, ma'am. This, this will be the last question that we entertain, because most has already been said, and we have other items on the agenda. So, Vice Mayor, you have the floor, sir.
I just want to make sure I clarify something. I wasn't talking about summer jobs, I'm talking about jobs throughout the year, and I'm talking about specifically to Portsmouth people. I mean Portsmouth children. And also, as far as the, the children and the choices that they make, I think it's, it's easy to say when you, when you're not living in poverty and you gotta feed your family. So, with that being said, you know, some choices are harder to make than others. I know for me, growing up, where I come from, I, I had to make some choices, like I said earlier, that I'm not proud of, but there were things that I needed to do, and I did, I wanted to make sure that people around the house was getting fed. And like I said, a lot of the times, what we don't understand, because we blame the parents, and we try to put a blame on the parents, but, you know, a lot of times, these parents are working many shifts, and they can't be home with their children to deal with the, the decisions that they're making. So, I think those are some of the things that we have to keep in mind, but I really think as a council, if we really truly care like we say we do... as a council, if we really truly care like we say we do, then our actions have to show that we really truly care like we say we do.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Ms. Terry.
James Wright, City Engineer, will be the next presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of the City Council. Tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of the work we've done to date on the three high school fields, the Charles Peak Little League Field, start the sportsplex discussion and give you an update on the condition of some of our recreational facilities. Um, when we first got the task to, to move forward with the high school fields and the field at Charles Peak Little League, we engaged our annual service consultants on the preliminary project scopes, and then we talked with the stakeholders for each individual project. As you can see, the schools stakeholders include Dr. Jerry Simmons, Herb Robinson, Thomas Marsh, Theodore Falk, Michael Cromarty, and Vincent Pugh. Um, as far as Charles Peak Little League, we engaged Parks and Recreation Department. After going um through conversation with stakeholders and then circling back to your annual service consultants, we finalized those project scopes and initiated the projects. Um, this is a sample of what we received on just the IC Norcom High School. We received similar information for the other high schools. Basically, it's a, it's a, it's a laundry list of needs and assessment of the condition of the fields, where they are now, what they would like, where they would want to be in the future. Um, the reason we got this information is because the overall facility needs, so that the team could assess the potential impacts on each type of sports activity on the other sports activities. We looked at things such as playability, types of events and activities, both current and future. We looked at the rules and regulations for Virginia High School events, and we also looked at the impacts of local and state regulations for site plan development, because these plans, um, once they move forward, would have to go through city processes. So we looked at things such as zoning, stormwater management, and other things. And so the current project status, um, we will be incorporating the stakeholder comments into the final concept, uh, plan for the renderings, uh, the survey is complete, geotechnical work is scheduled, um, we're developing opinions of probable costs based on proposed layouts, and then we're presenting our deliverable package, which includes conceptual stormwater drainage design, conceptual lighting plan, conceptual utility service plan, and all associated site work. Um, in an upcoming slide, I will show where we are with respect to the overall project development for each one of these, but in the next two slides, I'm going to show you preliminary renderings for IC Norcom and also for Charles Peak. So um this is the overall concept plan for the IC Norcom site. The rendering shows the, uh, the field, the expanded track, um, we have renovated tennis courts, the, the track actually goes from six to eight lanes to manage the events better and to also make the track eligible for district meets. Um, we have relocated visitor seating because of the widened track has to move those seats back. Um, we have the fieldhouse located between the tennis courts and the baseball field, and we have the relocated uh baseball and softball fields and also stormwater management, also near the bus island. The shift in the baseball and softball field occurs with the expanded track and the fieldhouse. Um, because there are impacts to other sports, the potential for phase of improvement shown, we need to be thoroughly vetted with the school team. Charles Peak Little League, um, this rendering shows one senior field, one senior field, three little league fields, storage building, concessions, additional parking, and stormwater So um where we are with next steps, um, when we get to deliverals, the team will continue to discuss how the proposed improvements play against each other and impact the overall usage of the high school athletic complexes. The team will also discuss the estimates while examining potential cost savings, unknowns, and potential material delivery cost issues. During this COVID time, we've seen on projects that have yet to start, on projects that are actually under construction, um, having issues with materials being delivered, um, as simple as PVC pipe down to electrical components, um, just about every type of material that you can think on a construction project, um, specifically, um, as we get into some of the municipal buildings, um, HVAC units, these, these, these uh items have long lead times and can drastically impact project schedules. In the last part of our discussion, when we get deliverals, will uh revolve around prioritization and scheduling. Um, I'm going to go back to Norcom for just one second. So um because of the way um all these components play against each other, um, it's, it's going to be a lengthy discussion with the schools about how to, how to potentially phase these projects. If priority is the field and the fieldhouse, um, what are those impacts going to be to both softball and baseball, um, based on construction schedule, delivery times? Those seasons could be drastically impacted while you work on those fields. Initial magnitude of cost for this overall site are about six point seven million dollars, with about half of that being for um the fields, uh, the fieldhouse, no, the football field, I'm sorry, the fieldhouse and the stormwater management. Charles Peak, um, the, the rough magnitude of cost estimate for this overall, overall site is about two point five million. Um, just, um, just for the fieldhouse alone, if we go back to Norcom, that's about nine hundred thousand dollars. I'll, I'll pause for any comments on, on this part of it before getting into um the piece about the sportsplex.
Okay. Why, why don't, why don't we do this in the interest of time? Continue your presentation and then we'll take comments at the end, please.
Yes, sir. So um as far as general project um development, where we, where we are, so um at the end of the month, we'll be, we'll be complete with the thirty percent plan development. So uh what, at this step, you have a concept plan, a defined project with known variables, and a high-level cost estimate. If funding is not yet secured, what this does, if this can provide supporting documentation for a funding request or grant application, um, at this stage, you do not have construction documents that are ready for procurement. While I, while I show the steps in the detailed design development, go into a sixty percent and ninety percent design, in some cases, you can actually skip that sixty percent and go right to ninety percent. Then, once you get to ninety percent, it's simply going on to construction documents and then moving on to advertisement and construction. So um in looking at to start the sportsplex conversation, um, we looked at a couple of um facilities in Virginia Beach. The first facility is the Virginia Beach Fieldhouse was open, was open in twenty ten. Um, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot facility built on thirteen acres. Um, it has two small turf fields, four large turf fields, um, eight volleyball courts that can be converted to four full-size basketball courts, concessions, and is also designed to serve as a shelter. Um, the original cost for this facility is fifteen million dollars. Approximate current day cost is thirty-one million dollars. This facility was designed before current stormwater management, and I used a cost escalator of about uh three point five percent each year to get up to the current cost. Sports Complex, opened in nineteen ninety-nine, sits on more than forty acres, has a stadium that seats six thousand people, expandable to seventeen thousand, is a five K course, regional training center, three acres of turf fields, and its original cost was ten point six million dollars. Similarly, um, the approximate current day cost is thirty-three million. Significantly owned city-sized properties of this size, there are only two, with that substantial acreage. The first one is a sportsplex at eighteen oh, eighteen oh one Porta Boulevard. Overall, it's just under twenty-eight acres. Um, there've been numerous improvements to the fifteen-acre parcel with the gymnasium. Um, approximately five point seven million CDBG funds have been spent on uh this facility and this site. The former site at Willett Hall and Woodrow Wilson High School is just over twenty-eight acres. Um, this site has been a part of previous discussions uh for other city uses. Discussions around any type of sportsplex or any type of improvements um for, for a facility of this size could lend itself to an opportunity for a public-private partnership similar to the Crock Center in Norfolk. So um just to go through a quick update of the current condition and things that are happening at some of our other uh sports facilities throughout the city. At the sportsplex, the various demolitions are nearing completion. Um, we have new utilities on that, on that fifteen-acre parcel with the gym, have a renovated, totally renovated gym with new fitness equipment, updated bathrooms, locker rooms, multipurpose rooms, um, multi, two multipurpose fields, parking, stormwater management, um, walking trail and perimeter landscaping. The land in southeast corner of the property was previously identified for the relocation of the cooperative extension, which sits in a building that's at the end of its useful life, um, off of Utah Street. And then the remaining parcel, that twelve, twelve, twelve or thirteen acre parcel, um, is unplanned, and we were looking at one point, um, doing a master plan for that, for that parcel. Cavalier Manor Recreation Complex, uh, most of the improvements have been to the exterior out in the fields. You have a new football field, new uh baseball, softball uh field, practice field's been renovated, new parking lots, uh, press box concessions, bathrooms building, parking lots, irrigation, and stormwater management. However, um, from our most recent uh assessment, um, there are significant issues with the building. Need, the roof is in need of repairs and replacement, um, exterior wall repairs, there's some drainage needs around the perimeter, um, there's uh needs new basketball court floors, lighting, um, specifically looking at the pool, needs new plumbing and electric, electrical. Um, and then overall, uh, every city building of this age, um, requires some sort of ADA upgrades. Looking at the cost estimate not to include ADA and plumbing, mechanical, and electrical of one point five million for those improvements that are needed. Neighbor facility, um, similarly, significant findings from the most recent facility assessment include roof repairs, replacement, um, exterior roll repairs, um, there's some settlement issues with some of the flooring, lighting upgrades and ADA upgrades, um, total cost estimate of one point seven five million, not to include ADA and plumbing, mechanical, and electrical upgrades. Currently, there is a project underway where they're looking at roof replacement and HVAC replacement at this facility, and once again, that's using CDBG funds as well. Joseph E. Parker recently had a, a new roof installed. Um, I understand it's a new playground planned. Um, there's some minor repairs, uh, we recommend a PME, uh, plumbing, mechanical, and electrical evaluation, um, and there could be potential for some programming updates and renovation. Don't have any cost information for this facility. Port Norfolk Recreation Center, um, roof repairs and replacement, um, exterior wall repairs, there's some uh building perimeter drainage, um, the building systems are at the end of their useful life, um, need some ADA upgrades. Uh, we're talking at one point two five million dollars, uh, not including uh ADA costs and plumbing, mechanical, and electrical upgrades. JFK Recreation Center, um, over in Douglas Park, uh, roof repairs, replacement, um, there are building and site security issues, um, lighting, windows, building systems are at the end of their useful life, um, and ADA upgrades. Cost estimate was not provided, uh, based on the size of the building and the type of work that needs to happen there. Probably better to replace that building than try to renovate it. Senior Station, um, significant findings, uh, roof repairs and replacement, exterior roll repairs, building systems, once again, are at the end of their useful life, um, needs major interior renovations. Cost estimate not to include plumbing, mechanical, and electrical and interior renovations is five hundred thousand. Looking at our outdoor basketball courts and playgrounds, um, Bernard D. Griffin Senior Basketball Court was recently upgraded, um, as well as the playground at that facility. Middle Street Playground was recently replaced. College Place Park was recently upgraded, um, the basketball court at Eighth and Jefferson, and also Maplewood Park are planned for uh this current fiscal year. Additional facilities for upgrades are placed, but have been identified for, by Parks and Recs and put into a plan. It costs approximately four hundred thousand dollars to do those upgrades for basketball courts and between eighty and one hundred thousand dollars to up, to, to replace a Churchland Soccer Fields, um, drainage recently updated within the past three years. Um, there's an exterior lighting request with a cost estimate of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Currently at City Park, um, pedestrian bridges, bridges, all three of them have been replaced, um, along with the sailboat ramp and adjacent bulkhead repairs. Um, the replacement of the large playground is currently underway, as well as the PVC fence, fence replacement around the entire park. The master plan phase one is about ninety percent complete. Uh, the consultant's working on final renderings, cost estimating, and also planning for phase two, which will include additional public engagement, um, refine concept, and final reports and estimates. And that concludes the report, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Um, quick question, um, as far as the, the high school facility, you said it was six point seven million. Um, I, I, I didn't get it understanding, did the fieldhouse, the nine hundred thousand you said for the fieldhouse, was that included in the six point seven million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll let, um, the other.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
So I just want to make sure, um, the report back is going to uh show us the strategy for how these things will be implemented. Is that correct?
It's based on the desire of the council, yes.
Okay. So um if it's the desire of the council to make sure that we upgrade the facilities for our children in the city, um, then we would expect to get some type of plan for how we're going to get these things done?
Correct.
Because what I, what I don't want to happen is that Portsmouth has a history of neglecting our communities, uh, particularly African-American communities, with some of these facilities that supposedly have been rec centers that are, are just social halls. I don't want it to go out with these numbers to be intimidating to the point that it say, well, we can't spend that much money, but, but we are spending in other areas. So I just want to make sure, I hope it's the consensus of the council, that we get a strategy, a plan in place to upgrade the facilities. And I know in my conversations with the mayor, um, we have talked about a state-of-the-art facility. It, it may mean that you got to combine some things, but I'm just saying, the, the expectation is that we are significantly upgrading recreation for our children. And I don't, I, I hope we're not going to be caught up in the fear of the dollars, because we can make things happen when we need to. And, and so I hope that will be our perspective.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Also, let me assure you that these are estimates. In conscious mind, I, I believe that um we could get those things done far cheaper than the estimates. So don't let them frighten you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any other questions? Well, I want to give other people a chance to please speak, please. Councilor Member Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, from our previous conversations, uh, Madam City Manager, uh, you, you did speak of doing these projects in phases, and I know Dr. Whitaker just said, uh, you know, we're looking for, um, you know, the presentation on these plans, but um I just want to make sure that these plans do get completed, and if, um, if, if, and I just want to assure you that, you know, um, if we have to do this in phases, I, I think this is still something that we should all consider, um, especially some of the projects that we feel are a little bit more urgent than others. So I just want to give you that confidence that, uh, we want to make sure that we do complete these projects in the, in the, uh, urgent, but also in an adequate way, so it can, uh, it, it can, uh, benefit our citizens the way they're supposed to be, and it can mirror neighboring cities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
Couple of questions. Um, why didn't we include the ADA and the PME?
Um, be, because once you start, um, modify the building, it's, it's hard to know which ADA improvements you're going to need. Probably going to need bathrooms, entrance ways, passage ways, and without getting in and, and doing that architectural level assessment, um, that, that estimate wasn't included. and doing that architectural level assessment, that estimate wasn't included.
Now, did we look into what it will take, or if the funds may be already there, but as it pertains to Cavalier Manor concession stand, it's pretty much supposed to have been done a long time ago, but it's not, and the people over there, they're complaining. My son played at Cavalier Manor Little League, and I actually went to a game, and I noticed that they were doing concessions under a tent, when they're supposed to have a brand-new state-of-the-art facility there, but it's not working, and it hasn't been working for a very long time. So did the cost, did we estimate that cost, or is it already in the budget? From my understanding, it probably should already be in the budget since that was already factored in.
It's not a cost issue, it's a COVID issue. There are COVID issues with the contractor and his employees, and there's COVID issues with material deliveries. We just got clear an information from the contractor that he's going to be able to get back on site and complete that. He has about three weeks' worth of work to complete that facility.
And Madam City Manager, could you elaborate more on that?
Not on that. I just wanted to put to the council, in light of the time, I would make a suggestion that the next presentation be put after the non-agenda speakers, if that's the desire of the council.
I think with that recommendation, if there are no further questions, we would like to say thank you for your presentation, sir. And...
I wasn't done.
Okay, sir, one more question.
As far as the softball fields, Norcom, you mentioned that earlier. Is there a plan, because Norcom softball has a field that doesn't include a gate in the back. I'm not sure how that's possible when you're playing baseball, to not have a gate in the back, the ball just goes anywhere. So do we have a plan that includes that as well, finishing, actually finishing that gate off?
Yes, so as part of the overall site complex, there's perimeter fencing around the entire site with gate access, but also along the foul lines where balls may potentially go out. It's a retractable net that they put up while they're playing, or they're not playing, the net will come down.
Okay. And for Charles Peak, the senior field, is that on site where the regular field is right now that you guys mentioned?
Yes, sir. So all four fields, the four new fields, basically, the senior field and the three Little League fields will be at the current site.
Have we thought about looking, because right across the street off of Elliott, there's a field. Have we thought about, like, making that the senior field and then transforming that field to something else over there, another type of field? Because I know some leagues have, like, maybe six or seven fields.
That was not part of any of the discussions to date. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question.
Well, sir, hold on a minute. We have a question from Mr. Moody, he raised his hand, then you can go, sir.
Mr. Wright, thank you for the presentation. In looking at the, in the Churchland area, assessment on the soccer fields, the cost estimate for lights, $125,000. How about the ball fields and tennis courts and concession stands at the ball fields? Were they assessed for any needs?
No, sir, they weren't.
Because I know the tennis courts got freshened up, but that's been quite a while ago, and we might want to revisit those and take a look at them?
Yes, sir.
And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just a question for the city manager. For these properties that are shared by the school, is there some collaboration with the school as far as the cost? Because I know we've been presented figures, but...
Absolutely. That's one of the next phases of this, is talking to the schools about how we can work on funding the project.
Okay.
Thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Wright, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you.
So with that, we have reached the 7 o'clock hour, when we should be getting our regular meeting. We are going to forego the last presentation on recreation, youth recreation, until after our non-agenda speakers. I believe that is critically important, what we are doing with our youth programs. So if it is the pleasure of council, we will proceed accordingly. I will now call our work session adjourned, and we will take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene to start our regular meeting.